All right. Welcome, and I'll call to orders, school committee meeting for May 27th? Sorry, with the holiday I got thrown off, what day? I believe that's actually the correct day. So, first thing I want to do is I wanted to congratulate and welcome the new members of the school committee, which is Paul Cochran and Jeff Currie. And actually, if we, probably the easiest thing, why don't we, guys want to give a quick two-minute synopsis of your life? Make it really exciting, full of great details and tales of triumph.
You know, long walk from Seaford. My name is Paul Cochran. This is my first elected position within the town. For the past few years, I've been a member of the capital outlet committee. I have three young children in the public school system and the K through six sons that are both in first, sorry, kindergarten, and my daughter who's in, I'm jumping ahead of things, my daughter who's in fifth grade. My occupation is a finance manager for Cisco Systems, the IT company, not the food services company. I've been with them for about two years and my prior experience with some insurance companies, both where I'm a director of financial planning and analysis. Thank you.
All right. My name is Jeff Currie. My wife Jennifer and I have a five-year-old who's in kindergarten with Paul's children here in town. We've lived in town for four years. I work for a company called MIB. I'm a product manager with MIB. Very honored to have been elected and looking forward to working with all the members, it's Dr. Allardy and with all the members of the school committee. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, so I'll get back to, we'll just do our mission statement as normal, then we'll go into public comments and then proceed with the rest of the meeting. Norfolk Public Schools offers a safe, joyful, and challenging learning environment that meets the needs of our diverse students. Through school, family, and community partnerships, we provide an education that inspires lifelong learners and cultivates a caring and productive citizens of our ever-changing world. Let's do a call to our roll call, start on that end.
Jeff Chalmers.
Jeff Currie.
Paul Cochran.
Mark Flaherty.
Thomas Doyle.
Ingrid Allardy.
All right. First off, any public comments?
Not everyone at once.
Just trying to get the hands, okay, looks like we're good.
We're gonna have to pace it, so.
We've got a big audience, everyone sure?
All right, skipping ahead. All right, so with introduction to the new members, we now need to proceed with the annual reorganization of the school committee. First thing we need is a motion to nominate someone as chairperson of the committee, and then a second to that motion.
I'd like to make a motion to nominate Thomas Doyle as the chair.
I second.
Any discussion?
Nope.
Wow, you fools. Okay, well, thank you. Cool call for a vote.
Aye.
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 Aye, I'll vote for myself. And going forward, you can just refer to me as Pharaoh or Caesar. That one's coming. Your eminence is fine. Anything, I'll take it easy. All right, so going for, thank you very much for that. Going forward, we need to then fill the other various roles. So we'll start, we'll kind of work our way downward here. We need a motion for vice chairperson.
I'm willing to be vice chair.
Looking the same.
Ooh, competition. Interesting. All right, let's do one at a time here. So pending motion from Mark, we need a second from that.
I'll second it.
Second, okay. And so discussion on that, or we can go straight to vote, however you want to do it? Okay, no further discussion, we're up to, we're up to voting. All right.
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, well, that ends that thing.
There you go.
You can refer to me as vice Pharaoh, vice chair, whatever.
Don't steal my material, okay? I get your role.
I said vice.
Okay, that's fine. Okay, so then we've got that. Secretary would be the next position we need to fill. So a motion for secretary. Anyone need further descriptions of these?
Yeah, actually, that would, that would be helpful for me.
It's a lot of work, hours and hours of work.
Secretary would really be the person responsible for taking notes for executive session, I would assume, primarily, because Pam's our secretary for the opening meetings.
Yeah, Pam is taking the notes here, so that's why you see her fiercely typing away. So yeah, during executive session, it'd be that person would have to then record the notes for that. That's primarily it.
Yeah, I've been doing it, but that's primarily what that person would do.
So anyways, that's where we stand with that, so if anyone has, who want to do that, so.
Did you nominate me?
Or Jeff? Do you want to do it?
That's fine.
I mean, this can be just a conversation part, we can figure out whatever people want to do, so.
I'll second it.
All right, so on that, any further discussion? All right, vote.
Aye.
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 You vote for yourself, Jeff, or?
Aye.
Okay. Jeff, vote for myself. Okay. Jeff, you currently are the King Philip rep as well as a legislative liaison, correct? Did you want to continue in that role? Did you want to, okay. All right, so we get a motion for that as well?
I'll nominate Jeff for that.
Okay.
KP rep and legislative.
So the KP rep and a legislative liaison. Okay, so we need a second on that, and I need to turn my phone off.
Second.
Sorry. Second, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. So that's five. Okay, so that's all those positions. We've got a couple other items we need to do here. We need members to be bill signers and payroll signers. I think last year, we have three people designated as signers, and then did we do two people as alternate?
The committee voted to make all members able to be signers, so we had two alternate and three primary, just because of travel schedules. If we have a warrant that needs to get signed, it gave us greater flexibility, so it certainly could fall.
Background, you guys roughly every two weeks, Donna will give stuff that needs to be signed, essentially people getting paid, that type of thing, they're kind of particular about wanting to get paid, so, and also paying the bills and so on. So it's really just you come by, you review it, signature done. A lot of times, we'll bring it to the meeting and sign it at the meeting, so it's not, it doesn't even require a special trip. And Donna's.
We work pretty close to the school, so I'm happy to be a primary.
Great. Great.
All right, I'll nominate Paul for that.
That, I don't think we actually need a motion for that.
I don't think we need to nominate.
We can just pick ourselves with that.
Yep, and then we can.
So I also work very close, so let's just designate it, who's going to be the primary people, so the responsibility is you're going to be the main go-to people for signing this thing regularly, and then if something runs into a problem, the backup people will then step in.
That makes sense.
So I'm close by, Paul's close by, you work a lot during the day, so is it easier for you to be backup, or?
Oh, right now, I'm not really working, so I can do it.
So you've got plenty of time, okay.
I'm in Braintree, so not very close.
And you're running around a ton, Jeff, so is it?
Yeah, I, this last two years, I did it, and it got to be increasingly worse because of travel, so.
So it'd be better for you to be backup.
Yeah.
All right, so why don't we do us three as primary, and then you two as the backup?
Yeah.
And then payroll, we need one primary and one backup? And then we want to continue with that way? Is that the best way to do it?
I think that's probably a good idea for the payroll side.
I can, I can do that, I guess.
Okay, that one, Roxanne, do you need somebody to come in?
Chairperson.
To be the payroll?
Yeah.
I'll be backup.
Member as your backup.
Okay.
I'll be the backup for you.
Okay, that's fine. So that works. Okay, so then we need two members other than myself for the following committee, or following committees, budget subcommittee.
I've been doing that, and policy.
Okay.
And I'd like to continue in doing those.
Okay, yes, next two, so budget and policy, we'll just lump them together, I guess. So do budget now, that typically starts meeting November?
Probably October.
October.
Yeah.
Really ramps up in the spring as you work through the budget season with the town and everything. Typically, I can't remember what background we've given you this before, but typically meeting after our normal monthly meeting, you would meet, the budget subcommittee I'm speaking of, would meet, go through the various, and you literally develop the budget from start to finish. There's a lot of assumptions that go with it to begin with, but then there's the fine tuning of it that goes on through the process. So who want, well, let's, as far as this way, I know, Mark, you said you wanted to be, who else would like to be in the budget subcommittee?
Well, Paul's got the background, so might as well take advantage of that.
So put Paul to work?
Yes.
Okay, well, all right, fair enough. So Paul and Mark. Policy, Mark, you wanted to do that again?
Yes.
And then?
I'd like to volunteer for that.
You want to do policy? Okay.
Yes, please.
The second Jeff. Okay.
Jeff number two.
It's all yours, by all means.
That worked out. Original Jeff, you had been tech, right?
Tech subcommittee.
And did you want to continue that?
Yeah, I created it, might as well just stay with it.
Yep.
Right, perfect sense. So we need one person for that. School building committee is largely, hopefully, winding down.
Yes.
He says, hopefully.
We have a final meeting, I just got confirmation, it's going to be June 18th, but my guess is there'll be some follow-up meetings over the summer and possibly early fall because they're still resolving the noise mitigation. So it's going to be two to three more meetings, I would guess.
That one, I'll continue on just because, even though it's largely wound up, get throwing someone else into particularly the noise mitigation issue and it'd just be more trouble than it's worth. So it is 99.5% done, basically. So as Ingrid said, maybe three more meetings, hopefully, there's some billing issues we're still getting through.
Yep.
There's some noise issues with the rooftop units, that's probably the largest remaining issue.
Yep.
And then some house cleaning sort of beyond that. So I don't know who else, we need one other person for that, because as I said, I'm more than happy to continue doing that, because it's almost done now, I've done this much, we'll also finish it up at this point, so. Any interest?
If there is no interest too, they could consider allowing Sean to remain, to complete the project as a de facto member.
That's actually a good option.
Yeah.
He's said he would.
He's been part of it since the inception, so we can do that, and that would probably make sense, and he's got a building background and everything like that, so that would probably make the most sense, so.
It's two people?
Yeah.
Two people.
I said it's.
If there's interest, that's great, but if there's not, you have that other option.
It makes perfect sense, everybody was in the beginning, Tom, you and he were in the beginning, so might as well just keep.
He was on it longer than I was. I came on when Ross left the school committee, so I've been on the last two or three years, I'll say.
If Sean declines, or if he's not able to do it, I'll be happy to fill in.
Okay.
Okay, so let's leave it at that. So is that one. Superintendent evaluation committee, actually, Ingrid, you may be better served to explain that in greater detail than I could possibly do, so.
Sure, so we have an agreed-upon evaluation instrument. In the fall, I'll be proposing my new goals that the whole committee will vote to adopt or to request me to change, and then the evaluation requires a mid-cycle review in January and then a final evaluation in June. All committee members contribute to that, but there's a subcommittee responsible for writing and presenting that report. So anybody who is interested in working on the evaluation will work, the chair generally is the final person that signs off, but there's a committee that helps to put together the evaluation report.
How many do we need for that?
Three people in total for that, and I can, I can do that, so that makes it easier, so we see two others.
I'll do it. I'll do it.
I'm happy to participate.
There you go. Final one, I believe, is NEST. Is that correct? Sean had largely done this, and I don't even know where this stands. I know he'd been trying to get it off the ground and.
NEST is actually working now with the TPA to partner, to try to make sure that they support each other's efforts, and they're looking to kind of define what each will fund for grants and what sources they'll go after for fundraising, so they're not competing. We have, we're going to have an administrator as a representative on the NEST committee, so I'm not sure that if we can't find somebody, I think we will have greater administrative involvement in NEST going forward. They meet, my understanding is, Monday nights, once a month. But again, they're, they're working with the TPA, and they're, they're kind of redefining, they're recruiting new volunteers, they only have two people on their board right now, so they're struggling.
Okay.
So it's kind of in a rebuilding process.
I'm also inclined, if we think there is enough, if we have someone who you said is administrator to be on there, or maybe that if our interests are served, then leave it at that.
I think they are, and if, and NEST wants to do any fundraising, they have to present it to the full school committee for approval anyway by policy.
Okay.
So I think.
So why don't we leave that as is?
I think that's fine.
Particularly while they're kind of trying to get everything sorted out.
Yeah.
Okay, so I think reorganization, I think we're basically complete on that. Kind of working through everything here. For correspondence, we do have some here, a lot from NCL, which includes, let's see, various donations from the NCL charitable fund, which is $52.80 in total, which is iPads for grades one and two, very nice. Also $2,500 for leveled books for the classroom libraries, and also $341.25, which is a donation from the gala. In addition, we have a donation from the Norfolk TPA, $16.84 and 7 cents, which breaks down to donations for kindergarten-guided reading and math, grade-two books, Wizard of Oz, is that for?
That was a play for costumes, materials, scenery.
That was for grade two, and then a portion of that also went to developmental math. Also for the Norfolk TPA, we have $840 to the student council, $650 to chorus, so a total of, that's a lot of money this month, $11,295.32, so we need a motion to accept that, and then a second.
So moved.
Second it.
Here we go. All in favor?
Aye.
So there was no further discussion on that, so we'll go on from there.
But that's approving it with the caveat that NCL gave us about wanting the iPads engraved.
Pardon me?
That's with the caveat that NCL wanted the, the iPads engraved, so.
Yes.
Okay.
And moving on to Dr. Allardy's portion.
Okay. I just wanted to let the committee know, we received, after the packets were together, we received a thank you for the donation the committee made to the Fisher House, so I'll just pass that around if you want to see that. Okay, I have two things in the packet. We are members, for the new members, of the BICO Educational Collaborative. It is a collaborative program that serves students with low-incidence special educational needs. They have a broad range of programs. We are members with other neighboring towns, Plainville, KP, Bellingham, Blackstone, Millville, and the purpose of the BICO program really is that if we have a student in our school system who has unique needs that we're not able to program for, BICO has high-quality programs that are housed in the schools of member districts. We actually rent space at the HOD to BICO for one of their elementary programs, and they provide the full programming at a significantly reduced cost to the district, as opposed to our pursuing out-of-district placements for those students. So typically, BICO placements are around $35,000 to $40,000 compared to the same program with same services out of district, which would be about $80,000 to $90,000. We do have students placed in BICO, we've had great success with that. As members of the BICO, there's two things we have to do. The state has a variety of different regulations that govern educational collaboratives. One of their requirements is that, and this is really for financial accountability and program accountability, is that the school committees of member districts annually have to appoint the superintendent to serve on the BICO Board of Directors. So the second piece in your packet is just information about that, and I would need a motion from a committee member and a second to continue to serve as the representative for Norfolk to the BICO Board of Directors.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. The other thing that you have in the packet is, under the state regulations, educational collaboratives are allowed to develop a capital reserve fund, and in order to have that capital fund, they're required to develop a policy, a capital planning policy, and two-thirds of the member districts need to vote to approve that policy for it to stand. The kinds of capital expenses the collaborative has, they do have and own and operate many vehicles to transport students to and from programs, they have students, they serve students with significant medical needs, so they have wheelchair vans, they have facility maintenance needs, they provide all their own computers and things like that that are housed in the classrooms that need to be updated. Without a capital fund, when they incur unexpected costs, they can, they sometimes have to come back to member districts for funding for that. So they're looking to be more proactive and fiscally responsible to develop a long-range capital plan and to start to build a capital reserve fund to offset those costs. So what you have in your packet is a copy of the proposed capital improvement policy that was voted and approved by the entire Board of Directors at the April 10th meeting. Again, they need at least two-thirds of their district members to approve the capital policy in order for them to move forward.
Do you need a motion?
So moved.
I second it.
Any further discussion?
The, the money that they get, that's, we pay a membership to them, right, or is how?
We don't pay membership, we pay when we have students placed in their programs.
Okay, and some of that money that we pay goes towards this, is that how they make their money?
Yeah, they do make some, some costs on the tuitions and things like that.
All right, just wanted to clear that up.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Passes?
I have one additional item that is not on the agenda, we weren't anticipating it, but I would like to suggest, we had a meeting, before we get into the meeting minutes, we had a meeting a couple of weeks ago to discuss a reduction in the district budget request to the town. The request was to decrease our budget request from 4.75 to 4.25 with the reduction of a physical education, a .5 phys ed position, in order to get to the number that the town had appropriated and could fund. We met, a motion was made, and it was voted, but at that time, some of the new members had not been sworn in, so I think it's in our best interest to revote that tonight. So I have a copy of the motion that you made, it's right under the motion, if somebody wants to make a new motion, I think we should revote it.
All right, so you want to read that, and then we need someone to second it.
All right, I'll second that motion.
You got to read the motion.
Actually, I'll read it aloud for the record.
All right, I'm gonna make, I'll make the motion, or is it that we submit the budget reflecting a 2.5% increase with the reduction of .5 physical education teacher to the town?
I second the motion.
It was a 4.25.
4.25, just to be clear.
Yeah, that's what I said.
Okay, sorry. Any discussion, further discussion on that? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes.
That's all I had for tonight.
Skipping ahead to, we do not have any subcommittee reports, just for Jeff and Paul's benefit. Typically going forward, as the various subcommittees meet, they'll do within sort of a summary of where they stand, should anything be going on at this time of every meeting, so just so you have some idea what it is.
Okay.
Pick a victim out to give a synopsis of what's happening. All right, so moving on to new business, we have two application for renewals for school partners, and again, for your.
For new members, we did put in the packet the criteria.
Okay, good. So that's your homework. Please read through that accordingly. But there's, yeah, there's very specific things that have to be met in order for someone to be deemed a partner of the school versus affiliation with the school. So these are two, these are two groups that in the past are at partnership level, and there's a reapplication process, a renewal process, excuse me, that they're both applying for. So the first one is the NEST that we had spoken of earlier, so everyone wants to read through that, and then need a motion for that. To re-accept, to renew them as a school partner.
I'll make a motion that we accept NEST.
I'll second the motion.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
First of all, I just want to point out, the Lions Club, they submitted their application, but they used an old form, it's not the current form. We, as a committee, changed the policy last year that even for annual renewals, they're still required to identify how their organization's purpose fits submission to the school. So I'm not sure where this old form came from, but you'll notice it's different than the NEST application, and they did not provide that statement. In addition, the activities listed as annual events, they didn't list the activities that they do for the schools, they listed a lot of the community events, but they do sponsor grants for the schools and other things like that, so I just wanted you to have that information before you vote. I think they meet the criteria, and they have been good partners in the past, but the application's incomplete, so I just wanted you to have that information in case you wanted them to resubmit for the June meeting.
I was just going to ask if you think we should have them resubmit all the correct form?
The committee.
With the correct information?
Does the content meet the criteria?
Not what's provided in the application, but what they do for the schools has, has in the past been considered to meet the criteria. I'm just not sure you want to.
I think my inclination for sake of consistency would be to ensure they use the right form. I mean, we're asking everyone to use this form, and I know it's a bit of a technical issue, but I think they should just resubmit the form.
Yeah, it doesn't mean we're rejecting it, it's just.
Yeah, I'm concerned about setting precedent, that we're not, I mean, we made the conscious decision as a committee that we want the annual explanation of how the organization's purpose still fits, so I'm afraid if we overlook that, that we'll be setting precedent against the policy decision.
Also, going forward, the next person comes up, and oh, we've already, and then next thing you know, we're not following our policy, so I don't feel comfortable in that.
I think they probably just had a bunch of them printed out in a file and just fill them out.
Right, and we can, we'll advise them that they use the wrong form and what we're looking for.
I mean, they can get it, and we can address it in the June meeting, so that's, that's fine. All right, so we'll hold off on that for the moment. We have various meeting minutes to approve, obviously.
Quick question on the Norfolk clients, who's, who follows up with that with them?
Pam will tomorrow.
Pam will follow, okay.
She'll call them, let them know that they use the wrong form, and explain what the committee's looking for, so they can resubmit for, for June.
Thank you.
Sure.
For the meeting minutes, we're going to go through this, obviously, Paul, and we really got to figure out a naming system for you two, this is going to be confusing.
That means we should definitely sit them next to each other.
Exactly. Yes, that will make it even more confusing, that'd be great. You guys, obviously, since you weren't part of the committee yet, don't have to worry about this, so the three of us that were on the committee at the time will just vote on these minutes. I don't know if, original Jeff and Mark, if you had a chance to read through them or not.
I'd make a motion that we accept the, what's the first one, it's the April 10th.
Second.
Any discussion?
Nope.
Okay, keep going.
I make a motion that we accept the April 28th.
Second.
Discussion?
Nope.
Favor?
Aye. Aye. I was not there for the, May 12th, so.
You May 12th?
The April 28th meeting was a special meeting, and it was only Thomas and Mark that were, so you two need to vote on those ones.
Oh, that's right, okay, that's what that one was, okay.
All right, so I make a motion.
I second it.
All in favor? There we go.
And then the last one would be the May 12th.
And I wasn't there for that one, so.
So Jeff, you want to do it?
Make a motion.
Second.
The new members were there, so they.
The new members were there.
And you guys can actually. Any further discussion on that, everything went correct?
Yes.
All right. All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
All right, okay, very good. All right. Pretty much it, we need to figure out the date of our next meeting.
Yep, we anticipated executive session on the agenda, but we.
Right. Before we get to the next, setting the next meeting date, there was originally going to be an executive session for this evening, that will not be the case any longer, so there will not be executive session. So for those at home, that will be, that'll take place at a later time.